Call a meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Reverend Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Shanks.
Here.
Mr. Vogler.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
Please stand for invocation by Councilman Larry Campbell and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
We all bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for your goodness and mercy. We thank you for allowing us to have health and strength. We thank you for all of the eleven hundred city employees that make this city run efficiently. We thank you, Lord, for your wisdom and knowledge tonight as we shall make major decisions that will affect the people of our community. We pray for peace within our country. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under announcement and special recognition, I would like to call to the podium Lisa Kavnis for a proclamation of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. And whereas, rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community. And statistics show one in five women and one in seventy-one men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas, child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age eighteen. And whereas, young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence in youth ages twelve to seventeen were two point five times as likely to be victim of rape or sexual assault. And whereas, on campus, one in five women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas, prevention is possible when everyone gets involved. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement, and it's time for all of us to take action to create a safer environment for all. Now, therefore, I, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor of the City of Danville, do hereby proclaim April twenty seventeen as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence and to look for opportunities to create change for the future, given under my hand this fourth day of April twenty seventeen, John B. Gilstrap. And Ms. Lisa Kavnis, if you have remarks, we give you the opportunity at this time. At the microphone, please.
Pretty loud. I would like to thank the council for this proclamation, for noticing and proclaiming Sexual Assault Awareness Month, the work that Haven of the Dan River Region is providing to the citizens in Danville as well as Pennsylvania County. I'd also notice that there's a couple of individuals in the audience that I would also like to acknowledge because of their participation. Danville Regional Medical Center has been very supportive to our endeavors and have provided space for us. Registering media is here as well. They did a wonderful article talking about our one-year anniversary. We just opened March first last year. We typically run at capacity. There's been a number of times we've had to turn around, turn away clients or look for support services in Martinsville and/or Lynchburg. Not only are we assisting victims in Danville and Pennsylvania County because Caswell County no longer has a shelter, we also provide shelter services for those individuals. I think this, since December, I think we've had four. So, thank you to the members of council, to Danville and Pennsylvania County citizens, church groups, and individual contributions. We do get taken some federal funding, but that doesn't cover all the expenses and is from the generous donations of civic groups, church groups, individuals that provide the lack that we have. Thank you, Mr. Gilstrap.
Thank you. Also, we have recognition for National Fair Housing Month. And Norma and Jackie, please come forward. Norma Brower and Jackie Wells. Whereas, our nation was founded on the ideals of individual equality and equal opportunity for all. And whereas, the provision of equal opportunity in housing has become an integral part of these ideals, and fair housing opportunities in the sale, rental, and purchase is a right guaranteed to each citizen regardless of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, family status, handicap, or elderness, and was incorporated into our nation's law under Title VII of nineteen eighty-six Civil Rights Law as amended. And whereas, fair housing is the policy of Danville as incorporated by City Code, Section eighteen twenty-four one as amended. And whereas, the City of Danville is to provide leadership in the effort to make fair housing not just an idea but also an ideal for all citizens, and will call upon every citizen of Danville to support and endorse the practice and policy of fair housing in their personal lives as well as in their workday duties. And whereas, the month of April marks the forty-ninth anniversary of National Fair Housing Law, during which time all citizens should take this opportunity to acquaint themselves with the rights and the responsibilities that are theirs under the law. And whereas, it is the intent of the City of Danville that all festivities of discrimination in housing are erased, and to that end, we must continue to preserve until the promise becomes a reality for all. Now, therefore, I, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April twenty seventeen as Fair Housing Month in the City of Danville, Virginia, and ask the people of this city to join in reaffirming the obligation and commitment to make fair housing opportunities a reality for all, given under my hand this fourth day of April twenty seventeen, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor. Congratulations and give you the opportunity to make comments. But let me please ask you, when you address, did you so through the microphone so that the people at home may hear you?
This year in celebration of Fair Housing Month, we're going to host our first Fair Housing Home Ownership Symposium on the twenty-fifth of April, and that will be at the Community Market. This is a free event, and we ask everyone to come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, next on the agenda, we have an update, update of future of the Piedmont, Piedmont. Update of the future of the Piedmont, and I ask to the podium Mr. Charles Majors, who will give us an update.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am Charlie Majors, and I serve as Chairman of the Future of the Piedmont Foundation. The Future of the Piedmont Board consists of twelve business and community leaders, and our purpose is to assist in reinventing the economy of our region for the betterment of our residents. We have with us, I have with me tonight, in addition to me, seven other of the eleven other board members, and I'd like to introduce them to you, if I may, and ask them to stand as I call out their name. Ben Davenport, Tiffany Franks, Jeff Haley, Alan Larson, Bruce Sizem, Carl Staubert, Lynn Wood Wright. The other four had other commitments and were not able to join us, but we are here tonight first to thank you for what you do to benefit Danville and the residents of Danville. We appreciate your work very much. We're also here to provide our support and our thoughts as you deliberate on the budget for the coming year. We followed with great interest as you held your retreat last October and unified behind three focus areas: education, growing Danville, and crime reduction. We commend you for this strategic planning and support those focus areas as critical, both short and long term, for Danville's competitiveness. We have had the opportunity to work collaboratively with your economic development team. We think you have, we think you have in place now a strong and effective team led by Telly Tucker. We are pleased that they and you have been thinking and working regionally, especially with Pennsylvania County. We believe that this is a critical component of success. We urge you to continue in that direction and to provide the necessary funding for economic development efforts. Public safety and crime reduction are necessary to provide current residents with a sense of security and to assist with the attraction of new residents to our community. We support your efforts in this regard. However, neither of these first two focus areas can be truly successful if we don't have a strong and effective public school program. Education is the most important issue we face today in Danville. A qualified and available workforce is the first item on any business prospect's list of requirements. Our school system must show actual results, both to provide workers and to meet the expectations of those parents who live here now and those who may be looking to move or not move to Danville. We also know that the school board, the superintendent, and the entire school system face ever-increasing societal and fiscal challenges. We commend the city manager and the school superintendent for working together during this past year and especially during the budget process. We also commend you and the school board for the retreat the two groups had recently, and your working together on this most important issue, education. We urge you to continue to work together. Each group has its own role and responsibilities, but we do not think we can have success unless you work collaboratively. We are not here tonight to tell you how to do your job. We're also not here to tell the school board how to do its job. We are here to say that we believe that you have determined the three most important focus areas for Danville, and we believe the city manager has worked to deal with those in his proposed budget while maintaining the ongoing responsibilities for services of the city government. No one wants an unnecessary tax increase. However, we think it is time to make investments in education, growing Danville, and crime reduction, and it seems necessary to have additional resources to fund those investments. We leave the details to you, but we support providing these additional resources, including a tax increase. This is not just a time for talk. This is the time for action. We stand ready to help and to support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Majors, let me just ask you to remain and see if there are any questions from Councilmen on the future of the Piedmont presentation or anything in general. Any questions? Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, not a question but a comment. Mr. Majors, I want to thank you and the Future of Piedmont for hosting the mayor and I at Golden Leaf. That was a very productive meeting, and to you and all of the members, we just want to say thank you all so much. We've learned so much, and thank you all again.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Major.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update from the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Lori, Ms. Lori Moran.
Thank you. I'm Lori Moran, and I just want to tell you tonight, I have the best job in this entire region. I have the opportunity every morning to get up and to work with approximately seven hundred businesses in Danville and Pennsylvania County. And those are the businesses that are investing in this community. Those are the businesses that employ approximately twenty-two thousand people in this community. And every day, those businesses are striving to help their employees advance so that we have a better community together. And so, it is a pleasure and an honor every morning when I get up to go to work at the chamber. In a minute, I'm going to talk about one particular sector that I promised you all I was coming back to talk about, but first, I have the privilege and honor of my job in getting to come before you because, not of anything I do, but because of our membership and specifically of our Board of Directors. We're governed by a board that represents both businesses in Danville and Pennsylvania County. It's a very diverse board. We have passed chairs throughout this room and throughout this region that have worked with the chamber. But tonight, I want to introduce and allow a few comments from our current board chair, who's Bert Eads, who is the plant manager at L.K. Manufacturing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. As Lori said, my name is Bert Eads. I'm the plant manager with L.K. Manufacturing Company. I'm also the twenty-seventeen board chair for the Chamber of Commerce. There are several other board members here with us tonight. They're doing double duty, I think, in a couple cases, but Alan Larson, Bruce Sizem, and Christine Bagley are here with me also. I asked to speak with you tonight to assure you that the Chamber's Board of Directors fully supports the top priorities you've identified for the city: education, economic development, and crime reduction. The business community speaks passionately about the needs for a thriving economy, strong public education, and safe streets. Because of this, our board has held many discussions centered around these issues. Each of these priorities affects the Chamber membership, and each is intrinsically linked. Without strength in all three, the competitiveness of our businesses is hampered. We can't find the talent we need to run our businesses. The quality of life for our employees is impacted, and our customers don't feel safe coming to our stores. As City Council considers the upcoming budget, we strongly support your efforts to make progress in each of the areas you've prioritized. The Chamber Board and the members we represent stand ready to engage with the City of Danville and with Danville Public Schools to help make improvements. We fully recognize that the choices you have to make are difficult. The Chamber thanks you for your service, your leadership, and your dedication to the City of Danville, and we stand with you as you make these difficult decisions. Thank you.
See, we have hard questions there for Bert. If not, I'll move to the next topic, which is tourism. So, as we talk about economic development, one of the areas in which we grow our economy is through our tourism base. A little over a year ago, we came to you as a chamber, and we came to both the city and the county to look at putting together a tourism program for our region. I promised you that we would come back. We are back, and we will probably be back in about another month or two because some of the work we're doing will be unveiled at that point in time, but I wanted to make sure we came at this point to let you know what's been done and what we're planning to do. In your packets that I've given, you'll see that there's a sheet from the state that has the impact of tourism on this region. Those are state numbers that are pulled. They only go through two thousand fifteen, so obviously, we want to look at how we advance beyond that. But tourism has a significant economic impact and contributor to this region already, and our goal is how do we work and continue to grow that and bring more dollars into Danville and Pennsylvania County? We've done that through the appointment of an advisory committee, and you have a listing of that advisory committee in your packet as well. You can see that that committee represents county, city, restaurants, lodging, attractions, arts. We've tried to make sure we have a good diversity within our advisory committee. We've also, as part of our work this past year, hired a part-time tourism coordinator, Amy Bowles, who is with me tonight. And we also, in our board, they selected their chairwoman, and at this time, I'd like to call on her to come and give you a little bit of an update of what's been done so far, so far, and that's Brenda Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, staff. Good to be with you again tonight. I'm just going to touch on a couple of things that the Tourism Committee is doing. You've already heard from Ms. Moran. You've got a packet, and you'll hear some more from her in just a moment. First, I think most of you have seen our calendar of events. It's in your packet, and if anyone here tonight would like a copy, we'd be glad to give them to you. They're out in all the businesses that we could possibly get them in. They're at welcome centers, they're on the interstates coming into Virginia from North Carolina, eighty-five, ninety-five. They're in the airports, Roanoke, Lynchburg, Raleigh-Durham, Greensboro, et cetera. So, we have, we printed ten thousand of these, so they're out and about, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback. Of course, it doesn't have everything in it that we would like to at the time of printing, and there will be a second printing mid-year, so I'm asking those that are listening and that are here tonight, especially if you know of a big event that needs to be on the calendar, to please let us know, and we'll make sure it's on the next printing. In addition, we have a subcommittee that was just formed that is going to be studying the idea of developing a love sign like many localities have around. I realize Danville Parks and Rec is in the process of developing its own love sign, and Chatham is in the process of developing its own love sign, but those will be permanent signs. We, as a chamber, plan to develop a love sign. Of course, this all has to go through the Virginia's for Lovers, the Virginia Tourism Organization to approve it, but in conjunction with Virginia's for Lovers, our sign will be a mobile one that will be able to transport around, and anyone having a festivity or an event can use, borrow the sign, and it's a great opportunity to have photos. We're going to launch the press release about the love sign during our Tourism Week coming up in May, starts May seventh, and it will be a contest to get feedback from the community. We're going to ask citizens to submit ideas for the design of the letters and materials to be used that depict Danville and Pennsylvania County's history and what's relevant to our area. And then, the last thing that I will mention, we do, as another part of our Tourism Committee, we have set up some stakeholders' meetings coming up real soon, and I'm going to run through those real quick. We're going to invite businesses and organizations to participate in these stakeholders' meetings. These meetings will help determine shared marketing opportunities and needs, allow for input on the new tourism website, assist with registering with and updating stakeholder listings on Virginia.org, and allow for feedback on how the Chamber can help tourism stakeholders to be successful. All these stakeholders' meetings will take place at the Chamber's office on twenty-nine. So, on April thirteenth, the stakeholders will include the attractions, the museums, recreation. On April twenty-seventh, the stakeholders' meeting will include those in hotels, motels, beds and breakfasts. On May first, agritourism, the breweries, vineyards, farms, et cetera. And then, on May eleventh, a general stakeholders' meeting, restaurants, venues, shopping, public, and of course, anyone is welcome to come to any of these anytime. We invite you to come to our tourism meetings. We meet on the third Monday of the month at the Chamber at four o'clock, and as these stakeholders' meetings start taking place, we invite you to attend any of that. And again, I thank you for your attention, and Lori?
Any questions?
So, our goal really is how are we going to work to grow a sector that's already here and expand that sector? And that's part of what those stakeholder meetings will do. How do we help the businesses that are already here, the attractions that are here? How do we help them get more people here? How do we help them to get people to stay here longer while they are here? And that will start those conversations in the stakeholder meetings. If you look at the three-year plan, that's a continuation. That's not a one-time event. It's building a relationship so that we can help them, whether it's frontline training, customer service, helping them to better understand the assets we have in this region to promote them, whatever it may be, to help those existing businesses when they are having visitors already come here, how do we keep them longer? And how do we let them spend more money while they're here? That's the ultimate goal. How do they spend more money while they're here? In looking at that, we're in the process of building out, the calendar was the first thing we did because we kept having requests that people wanted something in their hands. We are in the process of doing our website and logo. If any of you have ever been through that process, it made my childbirth look easy. That's all I've got to say. Childbirth looks easy now. We're almost there. We're almost having a logo, and I hope we will be back in probably the next month to two months with the logo and potentially with the frame up of what that website will look like. We want this to be a friendly website, that when people come to it, that they really want to not just come here but experience the great assets we have here. We want it to be so friendly that whether you're bringing a family, or you're coming to look for history, or you're coming to look for outdoor attractions, you can find it quickly and easily and see what we already have to offer to people. And then, we want to look at whatever marketing materials we need, and we'll be, you'll see that all in that strategic plan, the other pieces that we need so that as people that are looking at making decisions on where they go, that they're choosing us. As sports events are looking for places to have tournaments, they're looking at us. We have a sporting event coming into Danville this coming weekend with a rugby tournament. Do you realize how many hotel rooms and how many dollars will be spent here this weekend on that event? You know, can we position ourselves to get more events like that? That's tourism. Who can we bring in? How can we keep them here longer? So, we offer that you look at that three-year plan. You're welcome to ask questions tonight, and we'll also, you know how to reach me. I think I've given you Amy's card, so you can call her at any point in time, and we're also going to come back in about a month to two months with the website, so we'll be here to answer more questions then. we'll be here to answer more questions then. We are your partner in this. It is our goal, and if we do our job, and one of our key pieces is data collection, if we do our job, you will see an increase in your bottom line because more people will be here, they'll be eating in your restaurants, they'll be staying in your hotels, they'll be shopping in your stores, they'll be spending money at our attractions. And the bottom line will increase, and the great news is about that is they require very few services while they're here. So if you have any questions, we're welcome to take them now later.
Any questions for the Chamber? Dr. Miller?
Well, this is awesome. As you travel around Virginia, Highway 58, the interstate, you stop at a rest stop, you can see these of other towns and counties. If you pick one up, you can see what's going on in that area. I'm just amazed at how many events go on here, and this is worth its weight in gold.
Thank you.
This brochure alone. Thank you.
And we already know how many events we don't have included in it. So we are constantly updating the website, recognizing people go to the website, but we're also going to be looking at doing next some rack cards that go out, just general information cards that send people to our website when we have it, sending them to social media. Because again, as people are traveling, they want to pick up and feel in touch with them. So we want to make sure that we reach people every way, whether it's an online presence, whether it's a print presence. We want to make sure that we are getting the name of Danville and Pennsylvania County out to every person who's looking to make a decision on where to travel.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Shanks.
Ms. Moran, always good to have you.
Thank you.
Looking through, and I appreciate this work. You know, Danville City Council has, for years, had a tourism board that just couldn't quite get it together, and I'm really excited about what y'all have put together. My question is, I didn't see people like the North Theater, or the Tank Museum, or the Science Museum, or the Langhorn House. Have they been approached? Not being, some of those aren't businesses, so I was just curious. Has the Tourism Board approached those types?
So if you look at our committee members, Adam Goble with the Danville Science Center is on there, and so he brings that voice of representing one of our museums and attractions there. But also, that's the key part. We recognize that for our advisory committee, you can only have so many people or it becomes total chaos. But that's the purpose of those stakeholder meetings. We're going to invite those attractions, museums, we want them to come and get involved. And again, that's not a one-time meeting because we need to make sure we're meeting the voices of all of them, and that they're getting to know each other. Because sometimes, in some cases, we have tourism businesses and attractions that don't know one another or realize what we have to offer. We have a stakeholder script specifically for the attractions, museums, that sector.
Thank you. Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Moran, in Danville, Pennsylvania County, we have a number of residents who belong to many state, regional, and national boards. They go to conferences all the time. Have we done a survey of sort to see how many people who live in our region that have these kind of connections, that they could bring these people from the state, from the region, from the nation, to our region for business, conferences, meetings, et cetera, hotels?
We have not done a survey at this time to see that, but one of the things we have talked about is putting together packets that can be used. So just to your point, we have a lot of people who have the opportunity to bring in groups from 20 to 100 or to 500 to here at Danville. We definitely want to work with those groups to put together the marketing packages when people are looking at that. Avery's North Campus has events all of the time that are not affiliated with Avery. If we can help them get more events to the North Campus, imagine the economic impact it will have on all of the businesses if they're hosting. The city has feels galore. I mentioned the rugby tournament. Again, think about all the assets we have. We're not using them at capacity. And so our goal is, how do you put those packages together to help market this region, to show people what we have, to have the relationships with our hotels, our restaurants, our different amenities? Put that in a package, and then work with the people who are the connection to those state and national boards, or those sporting events, or whatever clubs and organizations they may be able to influence to come here. And we want to make sure that we help them to do that because they're already positioned to do it, and we just have to give them the tools that they can sell this region and make people make this the choice destination.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
And you have, you getting ready to say something? I didn't want to interrupt.
I just wanted to thank you all for your continued support because I recognize it. In addition to all of my businesses I get to work with, I also get to work with great groups like our elected officials, and I really do value and appreciate that. I appreciate our mayor, whoever has been our mayor when I've been at the Chamber, always at a call to notice when we need to cut a ribbon or do something in the city. So thank you for your ongoing support of the Chamber and the work that we do today.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is communications from visitors. Citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Let me remind you that as an individual, we will allot five minutes for each. If you're representing in a group, we will allot 10 minutes. Anyone wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name.
Cecil Bridgeforth, City of Danville for 40 years now. I want to commend Mr. Majors and they who work with him because they finally got it right. You cannot have an economic force without a good education, and you cannot have a good education because education promotes the economics, and good economics cut down the crime. However, we cannot have this if we're not willing to ante up. Now, I have been talking about increasing taxes for a long time, but now I commend our city manager, who boldly recommended increase in real estate taxes because everybody have to ante up. There's nothing free in this city. We all have to work together. Now, when I get my utility bill, I see all these extra fees that continue to increase, which disturbs me. I have to pay for my water, then I have to pay a fee for the privilege of having the water, then I have to pay another fee for having the water fall into my house, and then I have to pay for my electricity, then I have to pay a fee for the privilege of using it, then I have to pay another fee to have it sent to my house. Then I have to pay someone to pick up my garbage, and that increases. Then I have to pay for wastewater, that increases. So we keep adding these little fees, so why not just go ahead and increase our taxes? Now, I know in the paper today, you talked about personal property increases. I want to be able to drive my car, you know what I mean? Why not? You already decreased the value of my house, so what I have to lose? Go ahead and go from 73 cents to 88 cents per 100. We're still the lowest. And let me tell you, I got two minutes, 48 seconds. 1994, I purchased a 92 Volvo. I was proud of that thing until I carried it to the shop. And when I carried it to the shop and got the bill, I was shocked at how much it cost me to have that car serviced. And when I complained about it, I was told, if you can't afford it, don't get it. So if we can't afford the homes that we build, knowing that there are taxes that are attached to it, I don't care if you have the deed to it, to keep it, you have to pay taxes. So all of us need to ante up because I want good education because industry come where there is a good educational base in the city. Dr. Jones can't do his work adequately if the resources are not there for him to do so. We can't get good jobs in if the educational is not where it need to be. I encourage you, when you go to the table of decision, don't be afraid. You elected now, raise the taxes. I'll ante up. Everybody else ought to ante up so that we can have a good educational system, so that it'll be known throughout the state of Virginia and throughout the nation. And then we'll have good economic results, and the crimes will go down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Hearing none. We will move on to the agenda items. First is minutes of a previous meeting, a regular council meeting held on March 7th, 2017. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilman Campbell.
Motion to approve.
Second? Second, Councilman Buckner. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye. Next on the agenda is consent agenda. The following budget amendments, items B and C, have been previously discussed by City Council and introduced for first reading, and will be further considered by City Council in public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, there will be no separate discussion on these items, and they will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by a council member or a citizen, the items will be removed from the consent process and considered separately. Open the public hearing on items B and C. Public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Mr. Shanks.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the removal of item C from the consent agenda.
Okay, item C is removed. We will take each one separately. So looking at B first, consideration of an ordinance to provide for grant funds. What's the pleasure of counsel? Item B. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion that we amend an ordinance, I mean, an ordinance, approve an ordinance, amending fiscal year 2017 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a University of Virginia sub-recipient grant award in the amount of $237,832 and appropriating the same.
Is there a second? Councilman Campbell. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye. Item C, consideration of adopting an ordinance to appropriate funds for the IDA to purchase the White Mill property. Councilman Vogler.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017 budget appropriation ordinance to provide funding from the general fund balance for the purchase of the White Mill properties in the amount of $1,500,000 and appropriating the same.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Jones. Discussion. Councilman Shanks.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I think the White Mill building is a critical piece of property in the City of Danville. And I further say that the IDA has done a good job in doing its mission and creating possibilities for properties to come back into a useful life and a tax-paying situation. However, I'm not ready to commit to taking $1.5 million out of the unreserved general fund balance this year, and also taking $1.5 million out next year, knowing as a council member that we have many, many critical needs. We have already allocated $1.5 million for a football, towards a football stadium renovation, or whatever that comes out to be. We have a police station that is way beyond its useful life and is in dire need of replacement. We have a lot of things that we, as a council, would like to see done. However, this particular case, I fail to see the necessity to react in such a not thoroughly thought-out approach and in a situation where we have no commitment to the property. It's not unlike, it's not unlike the worst decision that I made on council, or one of the worst, which was to vote for the purchase of the school field property with buildings and all, with the understanding or the song being taught, told to us, that that property would be resold prior to us ever making a debt payment. Now, in the long run, that may pay off to be a good project, but it certainly wasn't what we went into the game thinking. The problem with this game tonight is we haven't gone into the game thinking at all. Now, in my opinion. Now, it's possible that someone's interested in developing the property. But how in the world can we justify at this time rushing through a closing that doesn't have to happen on a short string? I honestly believe that this could be a good investment, but we should sit down and prioritize how we intend to accomplish all the necessary goals that we need to accomplish. So I know which side I am on the total vote, but I do feel very strongly about what I've said. Thank you.
Councilman Saunders, and then come to this side.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand what Councilman Shanks is saying. I too have a lot of concern, consternation about the school field project. I also am concerned about the investment we're making as well. However, I recall the White Mill, at one time, that was going to be sold, going to bring in 400 jobs, et cetera, and that didn't happen over the years. It appears that the city feels that it can be more successful in moving this project along and getting someone to use that facility. So to purchase this property for, at the same amount of money or less than it was initially sold for, I think it's not a bad idea. I also think, given the momentum in our River District, given the plan for the river itself, the park, the YMCA, et cetera, given all these momentum, it seems to me that it's a good time to make the investment. I think our economic development staff have a proven track record of getting very good, solid leads, and I think we're seeing some results from them. So the fact that our city manager and staff recommend this, the fact that we are seeing progress in this downtown region, in the City of Danville region, I think with regard to this investment, $3 million is a good choice to make. Nothing in life is guaranteed. Investments are not guaranteed, but I think $3 million for property that we're naturally getting for about the same amount or little less than it was being purchased for several years ago is a good idea. So I support the staff recommendation on this, and I do believe that we can get some projects to fill this property, and I think Danville will recognize jobs and revenues because of the sale and use of the property. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I had two quick questions first, if I could start off with that.
But I can't answer for him where he's willing to answer a question.
I'll be glad to.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Um, it came up in our last meeting down here, and since you're here tonight, I was hoping that you could, uh, reinforce this. Uh, the issue about due diligence that will have to be done on this property, and it was brought up in the last meeting, that, uh, we are voting to approve this tonight prior to the due diligence being completed on the property and that we are committing to buy something without even knowing what's going to happen during the due diligence. And I had suggested that if something comes up during the due diligence that makes council have pause and change our mind, uh, and we articulate that to the IDA, that the IDA would certainly not go ahead with, with the purchase if council doesn't wish it to happen. Can you expand on that?
I can. I can assure you that we would not go forward with any project that city council, the city manager, and economic development is not in favor of. We are here to partner with all of you. We do not go out and seek property. We only finance properties and find, uh, loans and so forth and sell the buildings, um, on recommendations of the Economic Development Department. So we are just here to work with you, and I think we've had a great relationship and I think we've had tremendous success in the river district, going forward with a plan that you have accepted, uh, to revitalize the downtown area. That's all we're interested in, is seeing Danville move forward, bring jobs to Danville, and partner with all of you.
Thank you, Chief. And, and I had just a few comments I wanted to make, but thank you, thank you so much. Um, first, in regards to school field that Councilman Shanks brought up, and, and I agree, that's been, that's been a frustrating, uh, road the last few years with that. I, I would suggest that the difference between this project and school field is that, uh, the White Mill is sitting on a, a very desirable riverfront that is growing increasingly more popular and is surrounded by about a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty million dollars in investment over the last five years or so, with about, over a hundred million of that being private sector investment, completely surrounding the White Mill where school field does not have that situation. Um, i- in regards to the IDA, and I know that, that it's easy sometimes for, for folks to kind of make the IDA out to be this boogeyman, this terrible group that goes around and buys up property and does these things, a- and look, I, I'm in favor of having the private sector have as much property as possible. My ideal goal was always to have property in the hands of the private sector. But I would ask folks to think back five years ago, six years ago, think about what our downtown looked like then. Think about what the river, it wasn't even the river district then. Think about what it looked like then, and think about what it looks like today. That doesn't happen without the IDA. And so I think it's important that when we have these discussions, the demonization that sometimes happens of the IDA, I don't feel is warranted. And I think that there's discussions we can have, and council's brought this up, about looking at the itinerary of, of properties that the IDA currently owns, and maybe some of those don't need to be owned by the IDA anymore. I'm all in favor of having that discussion. But the IDA has partnered with the city and made a lot of great things happen. Again, we talked about the investment in the river district. Um, and the reason why, when we're talking about the White Mill, the difference between the IDA owning it and working to try to get a developer involved, and I got to be very careful about what I say because when we're talking about economic development, you're talking about confidential projects, and I'm not going to say anything that would jeopardize anything. But when you're talking about that versus some speculator, somebody else that comes in and buys a property and sits on it for a number of years, there were a number of efforts, and I know council heard me say this earlier, but the public has not. There were a number of efforts over the years to make downtown happen, or to spruce up downtown and to, we're all behind downtown, and they always failed, and they never worked for twenty-plus years because the private sector didn't think, people were serious about it. They didn't see it as a good investment. When the city proved that it was serious about redeveloping downtown, the private sector responded to the tune of about three to one in, in terms of that ratio. And so I feel that this is a similar situation. Nothing we do down here is foolproof. When you're talking about economic development, there's always some risk involved. There was risk involved five, six years ago when council, even prior to my time here, chose to invest in the river district, what we now call the River District. That investment has paid off. And so I know that this is going to be a controversial decision for some, but I believe in, in Telly Tucker and our Economic Development Department, and I believe in the efforts that we as a council, every member of council, all nine of us, and, and city staff and everybody, has been involved with. And so I, I do support this, and, uh, I'll be voting to approve it.
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember about six years ago when foundation sponsored council to go to Greenville, South Carolina, to see what they did to turn the community around. And at that time, downtown was dark, was gray, and all we could do at the time was try to create a vision or a direction to move forward. Now we see that over a hundred and thirty million dollars have been invested within the area, how things are brightening up, traffic, it's hard getting a park now, and the potential is very great. When seeing the riverfront park that's going to be developed and the possibilities of what can happen for the future, it's very important that the city take control of this strip and that property. And we want to make sure that we get the right clientele in that building. It has great potential for many, many visitors coming to our area, and it'd be a great economic development project. I will be voting for this, and I'm so thankful for the IDA and, uh, working with this and the economic development team. I think this would be a major, major piece for turning our community around and moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Well, I can look back about eight years ago, and I remember sitting in this very room. I, I was actually on a mission trip in, in Appalachia, insurance, and I heard that the White Mill had been bought, we had four hundred jobs coming. I drove back a day early to be here for this announcement. It was a great day. And, and then our hopes were dashed. It didn't pan out. The industry that promised didn't come. So it, it, there's some trepidation I have for buying this building and getting hopes dashed again. But what is different eight years later? What's different is we have developed the downtown. We have a downtown park that's going to be just below this. Uh, this property is going to become very, very, very valuable for development. There are many people interested in developing it and putting their businesses there. Now, again, as Councilman Vogler says, I can't say much more about it. But I think it's imperative the city gain control of this property, so then we control what businesses do go there and make sure it's, it is consistent with what we have already downtown. So again, I think it's eight years later, I think the climate has improved considerably for development. I mean, that's, you don't have many cities whose river is not developed like ours is. Look around Richmond, Lynchburg, I mean, they've already got development there. We don't have a lot of development there. So the opportunity is ripe for this area to be developed, and I think we need to gain control of it, and that's why I'll be voting for it.
Councilman Shanks?
But, but I did want to make a couple things very clear. My feelings on this have no bearing and are not intended to be disrespectful to city staff, Telly Tucker, the economic developer, uh, the IDA, not at all. My point is, I haven't seen people knocking down the door to get that property, and I don't know why we have to be in such a hurry without thinking through a, a whole gamut of what needs done. That's, that, that's my concern. And, and in closing, I just want to make sure that it's knowledgeable, knowledge out there that the IDA owns thirty-six million seven hundred thousand dollars worth of property in the city, and this will take it up to close to forty million. And of that, right now, we're just losing tax revenue, and I won't go through the numbers. I just don't, and, and I'm almost done. I, I just don't see the hurry to do this while something could be worked out, and that's, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
For a long time, before we went to Greenville, South Carolina, just want to thank council for the dialogue, but before we went to Greenville, South Carolina, for a long time, members of our community used to ride up and down Main Street for years and saw the downtowner on the corner of Main and Spring Street in that area. Many people asked us often, what in the world are you all going to do with that hotel? And now it's gone. That's the same question that people give us all the time. I know for myself, when they're going to the Old Dutch or the Charles Harris Financial Center, everyone asks the question, what are you all going to do with that big old building right across there? And I'm just so thankful that Telly and his group and the IDA and city council are working together to provide some answers to the citizens of ideas we now have for that building. And that's why I second the motion, and I will be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Whittle?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of my first rodeo on a budget is a, a nightmare for somebody that has to think and read and get through everything and, and learn to understand, uh, what it takes to be a councilman. But if I look at the building, it's bringing in a, a tax revenue now, somebody else is carrying the load. And we've got thirty days to do a phase one, a two, hydraulic, uh, testing, uh, or whatever it takes to figure out if this building is going to do what it's supposed to do. If it wasn't a, a knee-jerk reaction with it, um, I would have sold a little, little easier. But for me, I think it's a, um, it needs a, a little bit more thought. Thank you. So I, I will be supporting.
Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, I just have one quick question for the city manager to could share, uh, with, with the public that's here. What is the tax revenue the city brings in from the White Mill property, the White Mill building currently?
Uh, I'm basing it on memory, but I think it's around eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand a year? Thank you, Mayor.
Let me just simply say that, um, my position is opportunity involves risk. You can't still second by keeping your foot on first. Call a roll, please.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
No.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of amending fiscal year twenty-seven budget appropriation ordinance for Westmoreland Park Master Plan Project. What's the pleasure of counsel? Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance amended to fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget appropriation ordinance for grants from the Danville Regional Foundation for the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to provide funds for the Westmoreland Park Master Plan Project.
Is there a second? Second, Councilman Vice Mayor Jones. Any discussion?
I'd like to comment.
Councilman Campbell?
I'd just like to say, I'm just, uh, took a pink to see this project, master plan being developed, and I was very needed within that area. I've talked to a lot of citizens in that area, and they're very excited with the possibilities. I'm, I'm just very thankful.
Any other discussion? Call roll, please. First reading.
First one.
Oh, excuse me, first reading. Thank you. First reading. Item B, under new business, consideration of adopting an ordinance to rezone property at four oh seven Hallbrook Street. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on rezoning of Hallbrook Street? Four oh seven Hallbrook? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. What is your pleasure? Councilman Shanks?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I would like to make a motion for adoption of an ordinance rezoning from Old Town Residential to conditional TO transitional office commercial four oh seven Hallbrook Street, otherwise known as grid seventeen sixteen, block twenty-five, parcel four of the city of Danville, Virginia, zoning district map.
Seconded by Councilman Saunders. Any discussion on the motion? Please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Abstain.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
And the second resolution? Councilman Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution declaring certain city-owned property to be surplus to the needs of the city and authorizing the city manager to convey such property to the Danville Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Miller? Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Item D, consideration of approving a resolution to transfer property from the city of Danville to the Danville Redevelopment Housing Authority and the Industrial Development Authority. I open the public hearing. Any comments on the, on the, uh, item D? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler?
Are they read separately?
Yes, they need to be read and voted on separately.
Okay. A result, uh, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution declaring certain city-owned property to be surplus to the needs of the city and authorizing the city manager to convey such property to the Danville Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Miller? Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Abstain.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
And the second resolution? Councilman Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution declaring certain city-owned property to be surplus to the needs of the city and authorizing the city manager to convey such property to the Industrial Development Authority.
Second to the motion. Councilman Shanks? Any discussion on the motion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Abstain.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Abstain.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Abstain.
Doctor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Communications from city manager?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
From deputy city manager?
Uh, nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
City attorney?
Uh, nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Call a roll, please.
Mr. Vogler?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody who came out tonight and, and to thank, I see we have Doctor Jones as school superintendent here, as well as school board members who are here. Um, and I'd also like to thank, and if they wouldn't mind, uh, if they would stand, but
As we continue to go through this process, and we had a meeting right prior to our seven o'clock meeting tonight, and then we're about to go back into work session again to continue discussing the budget. And I know that there's still a lot of opinions about, about what we end up going with and what we end up doing. But this is a significant budget. I believe this is going to be a decade-defining budget that we are working on. But I'm confident that collectively this council is going to settle on a budget that allows us to invest in public safety and education while still being responsible with the taxpayers' dollars. I think we're getting closer to a budget that I think a majority of council can agree to. There's not going to be a perfect budget. There's not going to be a budget that any one member of council loves 100%, but I think we are working towards getting to something that will be good for our citizens, and we'll continue that process again tonight. Lastly, I'm a big believer in transparency, and I always try to be as transparent with the citizens as possible, and I know that that's a goal of this council. I know that there's, over the last several months, there's been an issue of some controversy, and I would, I'd like to put it to rest tonight. Some citizens come up to me and they say, Lee, I keep hearing city council members talk about these shoes that you're wearing at city council meetings. And I said, you know, I keep hearing about it, hearing about it, but I haven't seen them, and so I don't believe it. And so, I said, you know what, we're going to make that happen. And I think if I'm not mistaken, Mark Aaron's got the camera position. So, those watching at home, these are the shoes. Now everything has been fully disclosed. Thank you, Mayor. Good night.
I didn't see them. Uh, thank you.
And the, you know, the Sexual Assault Awareness Month is, you know, when Mayor Gilstrap read it, it, you know, it kind of, it just sort of hits home. National Fair Housing Month, it's, if you run in different parts of the city, you don't understand and see and know the people that are doing the different work, and we appreciate everything they did. Appreciate the future, the Piedmont showing up and giving us the support and the Danville, Pittsavania County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Yeah, just like to remind everybody that April 25th, from 9:00 AM to 6:30 PM at the Community Market, Fair Housing is having their first annual homeownership symposium. Some great information will be handed out there that day, and you'll get to learn a lot about what Fair Housing does for this community. Looks like Friday and Saturday, Friday, May 5th and May 6th, Nashville Recording Artists Smoking Guns will be here in town, Two Witches on Friday, and the Golden Leaf Bistro on Saturday. Also like to thank you, say a big thank you to all our firefighters who are here tonight. You guys do a tremendous job for everybody in this city, more than a lot of us even know. Also, I'd like to send a shout out to a special citizen who goes above and beyond to show his appreciation for city council members and the things that we do. Mr. Lewis Atkins has done an outstanding job showing his appreciation for some council members. Thank you so much, Louis. Y'all have a great night.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes, we're so happy to see our fire department here, the safety of our community. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say we want to pray for peace and safety in our city and our nation. There's a lot of uneasiness, and a lot of people have been faced with many issues, but I do believe that prayer can change things around. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Well, I too would like to recognize our firefighters, and thank you for being here. And I would certainly want to recognize all of our city employees who work daily for the City of Danville, and they do an outstanding job. Thank you. I had the opportunity to participate and play to engage this afternoon, which was fun. Aviat University students at the Carrington Pavilion had all these students to come from the Boys and Girls Clubs, from the different housing development areas, and they played with each other, which I thought was, I played with them too. It was fun. But it was good. Also, I want to, also mention that this morning I had the opportunity to meet with the eighth grade students at Bonner, and I was impressed, Dr. Jones. Those kids are sharp, they were well behaved, and I was just impressed. I was impressed at the questions that they asked us. And then when we asked them, they were sharp, they knew the answers, even when I, when we asked them, do you know how much budget you get from the City of Danville? They said, I think it's around 18 million. I said, well, that's right in years past, last year. This year, we hadn't decided, but the students were sharp. Let me just say that. I also like to thank city council for a long process here we've had with the budget. I think we have worked well together. We've asked some excellent questions of our staff, and not that our work is over, but we have certainly had a nice working relationship thus far, and I'm sure it will continue because of the council that we have. Again, to make note that this is Fair Housing Month, and it's also Sexual Awareness Prevention Month, and, and keep those in your fourth, our fourth, what am I trying to say? Somebody help me. Our present forefront, thank you, James, forefront, as we go about daily activities, we get involved. And I'd also like to thank the future of the Piedmont for being here, giving us an update. And Chamber, you're always welcome. Thank you for your update. And thank you, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Jones.
As the mayor stated, we were at Ms. Harvey's class today. They invited the mayor and myself to Ms. Harvey's class, and it was amazing. We broke the class down into, one side was city council, and one side was school board, Ms. Dones and Mr. Gould. And they actually were very, very, they knew the school board budget, and it was just a great outcome. Ms. Wall, everybody at Bonner was truly, it was fantastic. And when the mayor was going through the cafeteria, he was a rock star. All the kids, more like wanted his autograph, he was going through that. So, it was very good. Some great things are happening in our school system. My last point is just want to thank everyone for being here, and to the fire department. And I'll say this here because some of the conversations in regards to the budget, because of my current employment, I can't talk about when we go to the next room. But when council got together, as the mayor stated in our retreat, to come up with three strategic goals, to reduce violent crime, education, and to grow Danville, I knew then it was going to be tough for me as a council person because we have to put some resources behind these strategic plans. And after that meeting was over, that retreat was over, we later had a joint retreat with school board at Aviat's North Campus, and that too was another great meeting. And when we came out of that meeting, I knew then, once again, we got to come up with some resources. And so, when John Crane called me and asked me my thoughts in regards to the budget, I reserved my comments to the people who elected me. And I shared with John, I want to hear from the people who voted me in. And I checked my emails, and I was looking at my emails, but I, tonight, I've heard more people who support the city manager's budget than I heard me personally as a council member heard against it. Someone said something to me, a person who I highly respect as I closed. He said, what I think you should do, Alonzo, is look at what you as a council member would like to see the legacy of the city under your term as a council member. And as was stated tonight, I want to go on record saying, this is not about Alonzo. It's about the whole entire community. And as the mayor and other council members have stated, we have, we have a great camaraderie. Lee mentioned tonight, there are people nationally talking about how well this council get together, and this week I've heard also how well the council and the school board are working together. And so, I would say that as we continue this process, I hope as was taught to me, that we all continue to think about the legacy of our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Miller.
Also, I want to thank you for coming. It's also always a pleasure to see you here. We have not only the superintendent, but we have the chairman of the school board, Ms. Dones, Steve Gould here, and I'm sure we'll hear from you all later. But thank you for coming. The, I love this brochure. I mean, I was down in southwest Virginia a few years, that's where I'm from, and we went to the city and picked up a brochure and found out there was a quilt festival going on that day. My wife wanted to go, and there was also some country music going on and bluegrass, so we went over and just had a great afternoon, and we wouldn't have known it except for something like this. The budget season is here. Many cities raise their taxes as a final measure. When their finances are in trouble, when their debt has risen, after they're drastically cut services and personnel. In Richmond, public services personnel were drastically cut a few years ago. Now city parks get their grass cut once every three to four months. Public citizens are encouraged to go out and cut the grass in the median on their streets and along the sidewalks, because they don't have enough personnel to cut the grass. So, you can cut services and cut taxes, but you give up services. In Danville, our financial situation is good. It's not perfect, but it's good. Our fund balance is several million dollars above that of 10 years ago. Our bond rating is high, so why raise taxes? Well, we're competing with the rest of the world, not only cities and towns in Virginia. We can't rest on our laurels, our awards for being a playful city, our River District Awards, on and on and on. We must continue to grow our schools, grow our city, and protect our citizens. I'm reminded of sage words I heard recently from a very, from a former mayor of this very city. If you're not moving forward in this world, you're falling behind. Thank you.
Mr. Saunders.
I do pay special thanks to all city employees, and that certainly includes our public safety employees for what you do every single day, putting your lives on the line. We thank you for that. I too, along with our PEO, Mr. Arnold Hendricks, visited Bonner School today, and I was told about a 30-minute conversation. Ended up being more than an hour. Really enjoyed it, loved the children. They were very, very engaged. And I didn't want to leave, but they had more work to do, so I had to leave. So, it was a very good experience. I want to say to all the students, thank you so much for inviting me. It was a pleasure getting to know each of you, and especially your teachers. And finally, Mr. Locking, council members, I've been asked by some citizens to find out if the walkway across the river to the White Mill can be turned into a fishing pier. So, if you will get me a response, I'll be happy to inform the people, like other cities, you go out there, you walk on the pier, you fish, you have your sandwich, whatever, and you go back to the shore and you go home. And could that be a tourist attraction? What about the safety, et cetera? So, I was told to make the request, act the question and request, and I just did. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shanks.
Thank you. I just have, have one item this evening, and I would like to, well, first of all, I doubt there's anybody in this room who has not been affected or knows somebody who's been affected by cancer. And I know I met an angel once that was affected by cancer. This Saturday, the Bridge to Bridge Cancer Walk, sponsored by the Danville, Pittsavania County Cancer Association, will take place down beginning at the Community Market. I didn't find out about it until recently. I've read there's a deadline like tomorrow, but usually it's not tomorrow, usually it's Saturday morning. But anyway, it's worth a call. I'd just like to encourage everybody to consider taking a nice walk Saturday, and remember those who have passed. Thank you.